I was like, why is the thing in my face? What's happening?
If I could get everybody's attention, would you call the roll, please?
Danielle McKenzie.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Here.
Melissa Hunt.
Here.
Louis Williams.
Here.
Adam Webb.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Do you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move right into our consent docket. Item A is approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held February 16th, 2021. Item B is receive the minutes of the regular planning commission meeting held December 8th, 2020. And item C is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2020-2021 in the amount of $5,431,926.88.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. Call the vote, please.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item passes. Item three is discuss and consider envision more 2040 amendment number four located in the northeast quarter of section 23 township 10 north rural 3 west being of southeast 4th street and west of southeastern avenue from neighborhood commercial to urban residential. Application by BAM Development LLC Gene Melfin, Ward 1. Planning Commission recommended approval for three.
Vice Mayor and Council, items number three and four on your agenda are companion items. This property is located south of southeast 4th street and west of eastern avenue. It is currently zoned C3 with a permissive use for mini storage. The site has not developed since it has been rezoned to that zoning category. The applicant is currently proposing six duplexes on 2.3 acres. That is about five living units per acre. And to accomplish this, they must rezone the property to R2, two-family dwelling district as a PUD. Water and sewer are available to serve the site and detention is required. This does include a detention pond along the northwest boundary of the site. Access is provided by southeast 9th street and the FEMA maps do show a floodplain on the property. And most of the development is going to occur outside of the floodplain. Property is shown in the comprehensive plan currently as neighborhood commercial for the mini storage. Duplexes fall within the urban residential category, so a comprehensive plan amendment is required. Based on the surrounding land uses and the amenities that are provided within the PUD, staff recommends approval of the comprehensive plan amendment. The amenities that are included in the PUD do include some buffering techniques to the neighborhoods to the west. It does include the rears of the elevations be 100% brick to match the bricking requirements in the neighborhoods to the west. In addition, it does require open space that's taking place with a gazebo and a small dog park that would be open only to the residents of this development. Because this parcel is sat back from an arterial road with limited visibility, it does seem unlikely that this would develop into commercial into the future. And staff recommends approval of this application. At the planning commission meeting, there was one resident who did speak in opposition to the item. The resident was from the Hunter's Glen neighborhood. The concern was an elevation change that allows the duplexes to look into the backyard of the neighbors to the west. And he also had concern about the long-term maintenance and the property values in the area. Due to the concern of the elevation change, a slight change in the PUD design statement was approved. The original intent was to have wrought iron fences along the rear backyards. And that was changed to a six-foot tall stockade fence. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
As far as the height level of the duplexes, are we talking single-story or two-story?
These will be single-story with garages.
Okay, so I guess I don't understand the concern. Is a stockade fence, does that eliminate the concern about seeing into the backyards?
It alleviated that concern for that resident.
Okay.
I think that the land on the east side of the creek just sits higher
Okay.
than the land on the west side.
That makes sense.
And that alleviated the concern for the most part of that resident.
Okay.
Any other questions? Is there anybody here that want to speak on this? Okay. Just need a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. Call the vote, please.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item passes. And item four is consider rezoning. Application number RZ-1002 located in northeast quarter section of 23 township 10 north rural 3 west being of southeast 4th street and west of southeastern avenue from C3 general commercial development to rural 2 PUD, two-family dwelling district planned unit development. And approve ordinance number 95921. Application by BAM Development LLC Gene Melfin. Planning Commission recommended approval for three, Ward 1.
This is a companion item to the.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Make a motion to approve.
A second.
All right, we've had a motion and a second. Call the vote.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item carries. Thank you. Bring us to item number five is consider rezoning. Application number RZ-1003 located at northwest 4th of section 23 township 10 north rural 3 west being south of southwest 4th street and east of south Telephone Road from C5 Automotive and Commercial Recreation District to C3 General Commercial District. And approve ordinance number 96321. Application by First United Bank, John Secarjen. Planning Commission recommended approval 7-0. This is in Ward 3.
Vice Mayor and Council, this property is located south of southwest 4th street and east of Telephone Road. It is one lot that has approximately three acres. The lot was previously developed as a bowling alley and that was destroyed in the 2013 tornado and remains vacant today. This application is for a bank to be located on the site. Water and sewer are available to serve the site and access is provided by southwest 6th street and Claussen Avenue. There is no FEMA floodplain. Detention is not required because runoff will be less than the historic simply because there'll be increased open space and green space with this redevelopment. The comprehensive plan shows this property as regional center land use and that does include uses such as retail, service, and office uses. So this application does conform with the plan. Staff recommends approval of this application. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. All right, we've had a motion and a second. Call the vote.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item carries. Item six is consider final plat of Apple Estates, section 4. A replat of Apple Gardens, section 1, Lot 1, Block 4. Located in northwest quarter of section 36 township 10 north rural 3 west being south of southeast 34th street and east of eastern avenue. Application by Farzana Development, LLP Jalal Farzana. Planning Commission recommended approval 7-0, Ward 1.
This application is located in the Apple Valley neighborhood. Was originally zoned as C2 in 2000 for a general store for the neighborhood, but it was undeveloped and remains vacant today. In April 2020, this property was rezoned to R1 to make way for residential development. The plat you have in front of you now is four lots on 1.5 acres, which is approximately 2.5 lots per acre. Public water and sewer are available to serve the site and access is from Central Park Drive and Southwest 42nd Street. There is no floodplain located on the property and detention was provided with previous sections of the Apple Valley neighborhood. The comprehensive plan shows this location to be urban residential land use and the residential use of the property does comply with the plan. Staff recommends approval of this application. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any idea what they're gonna do with that little triangle back there?
I'm sorry?
Any idea what they're gonna do with the little triangle back there and at the tip of it?
That is going to be incorporated into lots.
Okay.
So that will all be lots.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
All right, we've had a motion and a second. And would you call the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item passes. Item seven, consider rezoning. Application number RZ-1004 located in the southeast quarter of section 19 township 10 north rural 2 west being north of southeast 19th street and west of Sunny Lane Road from A1 Rural Agriculture District to R1 Single Family Dwelling District. And approve ordinance number 96421. Application by Farzana Development, LLP Hussein Farzana. Planning Commission recommended 8-1.
Vice Mayor and Council, this property is 70 acres. It is located north of southeast 19th street and west of Sunny Lane. There is an existing oil well on the site, which will be removed and abandoned if this application is approved. The proposal is for 244 residential lots and five common areas. That is a density of about 3.5 lots per acre. Water and sewer are available to serve the site and detention is required. It'll be provided by a small pond on the west side and the existing pond on the east side of the development. There is FEMA floodplain and floodway both located on the site, but no modifications to either of those are being proposed. Access is provided by southeast 19th street and Noah Drive, which is an existing street stub in the Rock Creek neighborhood. Property, this property was used in the past to dump wood chips. Approximately 25 lots are affected by this and the wood chips must be removed and field dirt brought in if developed. The comprehensive plan calls for this location to be open space residential. Open space residential allows residential developments of up to three lots per acre with 30% open space. This proposal includes 20% open space and 3.49 lots per acre. 10% of the 20% that they're offering is accessible, meaning that it is located not in a floodplain or floodway. It's accessible to put some sort of neighborhood amenity on it.
Did you say 10% of the 20%?
Yes.
So 2%.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. Because this application is seeking rezoning, an R1 zoning in a developing part of Moore. It does have R1 zoning to the north of the property and to the south of the property. Staff recommends approval of this application contingent upon the approval of the 20% open space and 3.49 lots per acre. That is a deviation from our comprehensive plan as it sits today. There was a lot of discussion at the planning commission regarding open space residential land use in the comprehensive plan. Eventually, the planning commission decided to table the companion plat for this property to allow time for the applicant to hopefully amend their plat to provide more open space and come back next month, which would be March 9th for the plat consideration. But they did approve the rezoning that we're considering tonight. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
So is the 3.5 lots per acre compatible with both the north and south neighborhoods?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, in fact, it is the lower density than both those neighborhoods.
Okay, that's what I assumed, but I wasn't sure.
And were there any residents there that spoke out?
There was one resident there and his concern was drainage. There was some drainage concerns. He lives in Rock Creek Estates. And there's a drainage channel that backs up to Ann's place that has some drainage problems. So he was concerned about drainage and there's also a street stub that's proposed to go west to access some landlocked property back there and he had some questions about that. And I should say that the applicant hosted a neighborhood meeting prior to this getting to planning commission where a lot of questions were answered.
What is the open space in the neighboring neighborhoods?
Well, so we calculated it for the Rock Creek neighborhood because that's what it's connected to. So Rock Creek has about 3.5% open space in total.
Okay.
So they only have about 4.2 acres of total open space and that would include detention ponds and like the landscape medians and that type of thing.
Okay, so this would be if there's 70 acres and 20%, about one and a half acres?
Yeah, so this includes, I don't have that. 14 acres of open space.
Okay. And at least one and a half would be accessible for a park or something like that if the neighborhood chose to do so?
Yes.
Okay, we're just approving the rezoning based on they're coming back with a PUD to planning commission?
Applied.
Applied, okay.
Yes.
All right, are there any other questions?
Are we allowed to ask questions?
Yes, ma'am. You'll just need to come up here to the podium and then just state your name and address, please.
My name is Lola Ward. I live in Rock Creek, 2704 Southeast 11th Street. It's right off Laney, just to the east of the cul-de-sac there. I haven't heard anything. It's been very difficult for me, at least with my aged ears, to hear everything that has been discussed. And unfortunately, I did not get to attend the first meeting. I haven't heard anything about the square footage of the homes to be built and if there's been any kind of study on how that will affect our property values since mine is along that long slender line. That's going to be just, I suppose, one row of houses. I hesitate to mention my concern about my loss of the view of my ponds and the wildlife that I see in that pasture. I don't know whether anything has been thought about trying to relocate that. We have deer, we have coyotes, we have all kinds of wildlife there. But I'm concerned about my property value, I think perhaps more than any other thing. So if somebody could give us an idea about square footage?
Elizabeth, is the applicant here that may be able to speak to some of those issues? Yes, sir, if you'd just step forward and just give us your name and address as well.
Sure, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. Kendall Dillon is a civil engineer for the project also here. So in terms of the loss of the wildlife, I'm not sure there's much we can do about that. Now, I will tell you of the whole quarter section, only a piece of it is being rezoned here. So the outlaw, you know, here is what we're rezoning. This is not part of this. This is in a different ownership. So this is what we're rezoning. It is worth noting that the neighbor to the north, when it was approved, it was approved with a street stub. So anticipating that this would be developed in the future. So we, of course, are connecting to the street stub and we are providing a future street stub to the west. So in terms of square footage, I mean, it'll be a market-driven square footage. My client thinks approximately 1,800 square feet would probably be around the average. But of course, every home buyer is going to be slightly different in that, but that's probably a good average.
David, I'm sorry, gosh, these microphones are really loud. You speak a little quick and that's, no, you always do. It's okay, though, just with the mask, it makes it sound a little bit like this. So what he said was the houses are going to be market-driven, probably around 1,800 square feet. And he did show up the map. I don't know if anyone else wanted to see that. When Rock Creek was developed, there was a street stub with the anticipation that eventually that area would likely be developed. Is that street stub? What is that street stub? Because I can't see the street name. Is that Laney or is that the Noah? Noah, okay. I thought so. Okay. And that's only partial. So part of that there will still be, it's not going to be open space or green belt, but it's owned by someone else and it's not part of this redevelopment or rezoning that we're talking about. So you can see the part of the drainage, which is that creek that we have near Rock Creek. So it's just that area. Does that help answer some of your questions, Lola?
Yes, but unfortunately it still takes away our views. We live on stuff.
I would tell you that I live very close to that and I feel your pain on that and I understand that. So, okay.
So will these be custom or are you doing spec homes? What do you, what's the plan there?
I think my client, like most single-family home builders right now, their biggest problem is lots on the ground. The demand in the entire metro for single-family homes is so great that it'll be a combination of spec and also.
Custom.
Custom, it's more their customers come in and they have.
Pick and choose, smartage board type.
That's right, yes, sir.
Okay, are there any other questions for the applicant or Elizabeth? All right, we just need a motion.
Make a motion, we approve the rezoning application.
Second.
All right, we've had a motion and a second. Call the vote, please.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item passes. Thank you. Yes. Item seven is consider rezoning, or excuse me, item eight is consider ordinance number 96521, amending Part 4, Chapter 1, Section 4-108, adding a progressive scale to minimum fine allowed for each subsequent conviction for a violation of this section, providing for severability and providing for a repealer.
Vice Mayor and Council, what this ordinance is, is our noisy animal ordinance. And the change, what it is doing is, is giving a progressive scale for each subsequent conviction over a 12-month period. Currently, as it is right now, if I was a defendant in a barking dog situation, I could be given a citation for $130. I could go down and pay it. And then in two weeks, I could be given another citation for $130. I can go down and pay it and I could go on forever. What we're hoping that this does is with this step increase, upon a second conviction, the ticket basically would be, the citation would be $250 for the second one over a 12-month period and then a $400 citation for the third and any subsequent one over a 12-month period. We hope that this would encourage the defendants to take care of the situation, not have their dog continue to be a problem or their animal, I should say.
So is the calendar, is that a calendar 12-year or from the first citation?
Counting backwards. So if I had got a citation today, it would go back over a 12-month period. So it'd be a rolling 12 months.
Yep, okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second. You call the vote.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item passes. Item nine is consider approval of amendment number one in the amount of $144,082 with Garver LLC to add services to convert the Eastern Avenue projects to federally funded projects executed through the ODOT system and to add the design of Eastern Avenue Northeast 12th Street intersection to be incorporated into Northeast 12th Street project.
Vice Mayor and Council, the original contract with Garver was to design Eastern Avenue from Northeast 12th Street south to Southeast 19th Street. The project was set up to analyze the existing pavement and replace those sections that are in very, very poor condition. And the idea was we would do two separate projects, the North Mile and then the South Mile. During the study and report phase in working with Garver, we had asked them to submit, give us a roadmap of how we should make improvements over the next 20 years up through 2040. They provided that in their study and report phase. And after reviewing the study and report phase and looking at some of the short-term improvements, we thought, well, let's go ahead and try to incorporate some of those improvements and coordinate the Eastern Avenue project with Northeast 12th Street and try to submit to ACOG and improve, make some of those short-term or medium-term improvements if we were able to get some funding. And fortunately, we were able to get 7.1 million from ACOG for the Northeast 12th Street project and 1.75 million for the Eastern Avenue North Mile. And as a result of that, Garver's scope of work has now changed to include not two existing, the existing replacement of a poor pavement for two-mile section in two projects to now widening intersections. They actually now have four projects that they're going to be working with through ODOT, two through ODOT and then two through the city. And it's because of all of those changes and improvements to the intersections as well as upgrading all of our traffic signals along that path and that we would recommend approval of this amendment number one to cover those costs.
To refresh everyone's memory, when's the ballpark time for this to get started?
There, we anticipate the South Mile from Southeast 4th Street to just north of the intersection on Southeast 19th. That is a 100% city-funded project. And we anticipate that they'll be ready to start construction on that project sometime in late summer or fall. The two projects that were approved, where we received about almost $9 million for 12th and the North Mile of Eastern Avenue, those are in the fiscal year 2023. I'm sorry, 2022. So those, I don't anticipate that construction on 12th or the North Mile would start till probably sometime around 2023.
Do we, is this, are these projects going to overlap the same times as the underpass? Because that's a little bit of a concern with traffic with what all might have to happen for the underpass.
Sure, no, I mean, you know, we, the construction for the underpass date hasn't been set yet. I mean, there's still some hoops to jump through. But in the event that the north part of Eastern had the green light and the underpass had the green light as far as construction, we would certainly coordinate that to where there would be as minimal disruption as possible.
All right.
And we would anticipate that the South Mile would be complete before we even start any construction on the underpass on Eastern. And the majority, that, the, at the intersection of 4th Street, there's, the improvement projects are, the majority of that project is more for the landscaping and aesthetics in front of the high school. Once we get further north of 4th Street, Northeast 4th Street, then we get into some construct, you know, major construction. So hopefully, those will, those will be, not coincide with each other.
All right, thanks, Jerry, thanks, Brooks.
Okay, thank you. And if there's no other questions, we just need a motion.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. You call the vote.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item 10 is consider approval of a consent to assignment agreement between the City of Moore and Garver LLC, assigning a contract for the City of Moore, State Highway 37. Seven at Little River Utility Relocations Project with Cavernous Engineering LLC to Garver LLC Management.
Vice Mayor and Council, back in May of twenty twenty, we entered into a design contract with Cavernous Engineering for designing the relocation of our water and sewer line at the bridge just, or just east of Janeway on Fourth Street and Highway Thirty Seven. Since that time, Cavernous was purchased by Garver Engineering, and so what this consent assignment does is it transferred, transfers the Cavernous Agreement to be completed and funded with Garver Engineering. Basically, the same people that are, that were with Cavernous that were doing the design are the same people that will be doing the design, finishing up the design for this, only they'll be working for Garver now.
Same numbers, same everything else, just changing the name of the business?
Yes, as far as this contract goes.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, Melissa made the motion.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Cam.
Yes, item carries. And item eleven, I've been asked by our city staff that we table this item, so we just need a motion to table.
Motion to table, item eleven.
Second.
Have the motion and the second, you call the vote, please.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Cam.
Yes, items tabled. Item twelve is consider approval of an agreement with the Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality for funding of a new grapple truck, capital planning and resiliency.
Vice Mayor and Council, and the city has received a grant from the Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality for the replacement of a diesel-fueled grapple truck, also known as the Terminator, that does the big trash pickups. And the grant will reimburse costs up to seventy-five percent with a match requirement of twenty-five. The total cost of the truck is two hundred and sixteen thousand two hundred and four dollars. The grant amount from DEQ is a hundred and sixty-two thousand one hundred and fifty-three, leaving a balance of fifty-four thousand fifty-one dollars to be funded by the city. And the Clean Cities Grant awarded by ACOG for the truck C and G conversion will be used to help fund the required match, and the ACOG grant was a total of thirty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars. So that only is leaving twenty-one thousand two hundred ninety-six to be funded through the city's general fund, and the truck is a budgeted item, so staff recommends approval of the agreement.
What are we at on big trash as far as the lead time right now? Do you know?
Jerry, do you know?
Currently, we're about three to three weeks out.
Okay.
Three to four weeks.
Was the Terminator truck fully funded in our budget?
Yes.
So what do we plan to do with the rest of that budget?
That I do not know.
We'll burn it up somewhere, I'm sure.
Well, I'm just curious if it makes sense to buy another truck or if that's something we're considering, not that it has to be decided, I'm just asking.
No, I mean, that's, since that money was slated for public works equipment, we would probably come back to council with a recommendation for some additional equipment.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second. You call the vote.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Mark Cam.
Yes, item carries. Would bring us to item twelve point one, an addendum to our agenda. It's consider adoption of resolution number nine eight eight two one authorizing execution of project agreement for job piece number three three zero two five oh four between the City of Moore, the Oklahoma Department of Transportation and BNSF Railroad for the Fourth Street Understreet, Underpass Project.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is the agreement previously discussed with council with, between BNSF, ODOT and the city. With this agreement, ODOT agrees to pay fifty percent of the construction cost estimated to be not quite nineteen million dollars, up to ten million dollars. Any federal monies that we might get would be split between ODOT and the city fifty-fifty, which would reduce our contribution to the project. So in exchange, we would also be taking over the maintenance of Fourth Street. ODOT has done some recent improvements on Fourth Street, being the bridge deck over Fourth Street, a couple of street items there by Veterans Park, and they're currently replacing the bridge by Little River Park. So this is a good opportunity for us to maximize the revenue into the project, and for those that were at the public meeting in January of twenty seventeen, we stated that we would try and obtain funding from any and all sources, and so with this agreement, we have kept our promise to our citizens, recommend approval.
Well, that's good. Hey, with, if you're not ready to answer tonight, that's okay, but could you maybe come up with a possible start date for that project? I know that there's some additional things that still need to be done, but I think people are getting anxious and ready for it to happen.
Sure, understand. I mean, it's been talked about for a long time. We are in the process, we've got several properties that are in condemnation right now, and I am expecting that process to take about a year. I don't know that for a fact, but that's, that, the last go-around when we did the bridge, it seemed to take about a year, so that's what I'm anticipating. And also, BNSF is in the process of reviewing the plans, and so, you know, that will take some time, too. So hopefully, you know, a year from now, you know, give or take, we'll be able to begin construction.
Okay, great, thank you.
So do we have any idea of what type of budgeting we will need to do for the Fourth Street maintenance? Do we expect that to be significant long-term as we go forward or?
No, Fourth Street, Fourth Street right now is in good condition. ODOT has reviewed it, we've, we've reviewed it. The, the significant things that have needed to be replaced are either being done by ODOT or will be by ODOT. Obviously, there'll be some minor maintenance and stuff that, that we would take over, but as far as any significant outweigh of funds, at this point, we don't see that.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we've had a motion and a second. You call the vote, please.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Mark Cam.
Yes, item carries, thank you. We will now recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority Meeting. Item thirteen is the consent docket. Receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority Meeting held February sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, and approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one in the amount of six hundred and sixty thousand five hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy-four cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. You call the vote, please.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Mark Cam.
Yes, item passes. At this time, we're going to recess the Moore Public Works Authority Meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management Meeting. Item fourteen is our consent docket. A is accept the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management Meeting held February sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, and item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one in the amount of three hundred and twenty-four thousand one hundred and forty-four dollars and fifty cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. You call the vote.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Cam.
Yes, item carries. We will now recess, recess the Moore Risk Management Meeting and reconvene the city council meeting, and everybody is still present. Item fifteen is new business. Is there anybody, any citizens forum, anybody here that'd like to speak or say something? Nobody signed up? Okay, big, item B, any items from the city council or trustees? I just, I'll go ahead.
No, go for it.
I just, I visited with Pam Lewis on the phone for just a few minutes, and she said it'd be all right to share this, and that she just appreciates the, and Glenn as well, appreciates the prayers and the thoughts that they've received, and that Glenn is resting and doing well, and just, they just really appreciate everybody thinking about him. And we did have some firefighters graduate from, the academy was, was it five of them? Five new firefighters, so congratulations to those guys. I hope they're all starting, started their shifts and doing well, and welcome them to the Moore Fire Department, and that's, that's all I have.
That's a hard act to follow. I, so I was just going to say, on Bryant, right north of Nineteenth Street in front of Heritage Trails, if we could send somebody out there, I think there's probably a couple of dangerous potholes that we might need to address, especially if we could do that over spring break, it's looking a little rough over there, especially after the ice and all that good stuff. And Brooks and I talked a little bit about this, however, I'm going to mention it in this forum so it stays top of mind as we continue to talk about the Fourth Street Bridge. And I know we haven't planned out all of the diversions of traffic and what that will look like, but I do think that we need to address the traffic concern at Tower and Nineteenth Street. I don't know what course of action we want to take, but maybe dedicated turn lights if you're heading north or south, because that's a little bit of a nightmare over there, and we haven't even diverted traffic entirely yet at any point. So if those could be kind of just a top-of-mind thing, and, and then I don't know if you guys have been to the station lately, I think that you guys are doing a great job on keeping it clean, and I know everybody's excited about rotating in some new equipment, so I thought I'd bring that up. Thank you on that.
All right, and also, we've got some new audiovisual equipment, so if you happen to watch this at home, I hope that you can hear us a little better. The camera views are better here, I noticed. So, Brooks, do you have anything for us?
Yes, just a couple of things. Vice Mayor and Council, the audiovisual equipment is, we're not quite a hundred percent done, but we're close, and so by next council meeting, we should be good to go, and everything should be up and running. Tomorrow is Election Day for the franchise tax election. I would encourage our citizens to get out and vote, that's always important to do that. The budget meetings that I'll have with the department directors start tomorrow, and will continue through this week and part of next week, and then in April, be scheduling individual meetings with council members to discuss the fiscal year twenty-two upcoming budget, and would like to finally give a shout-out to Public Affairs for all of their hard work during the snowstorm and all the information that they were able to put out, and so that was very beneficial, and I know everyone appreciated it. So thank you, Deidra.
Thank you very much. Information, people love information.
I was gonna, I would add to that, I know that we talked about it before, but I always think that we're great at clearing our streets, and I realized how great we were when six days later, I traveled to Oklahoma City and thought, oh, they just kind of did one part of the street, and I realized that they didn't do any part of the street, that's just where all the cars had been driving for six days. So I appreciate it, and I know our citizens appreciate it.
Yeah, I would have to say that my normal group of quasi-grumpy constituents were quite happy, so very nice, so.
It was very good.
All right, Melissa or Adam, y'all, come on.
Nothing.
All right, well, item sixteen would be adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Had a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Cam.
Yes, meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody.